I call this the February 21st, 2023 meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Desi Fletcher. Desi is the minister at the West End Cumberland Presbyterian Church. And our allegiance to the pledge to the flag tonight will be given by Zaylin Henderson. Zaylin is 12 years old. He attends Fayetteville Middle School. He's a proud member of the Fayetteville Men. He enjoys singing, going to church, sports of all kinds, and he's the son of Marcus and Tanisha Say. If you would, please stand for the invocation. Remain standing for our pledge.
May we pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, the giver of every good and perfect, if we come thanking you for another blessed day, Lord, we thank you for waking us this morning and sending us through a day's journey. And then, Lord, as we come to the close of our evening, Lord, we thank you so much for the gathering today. Ask you to bless everyone under the sound of our voice, the ones that are looking on at home. Then we ask you also, Lord, to bless our mayor. Be with him, Lord. Be with all our Ottomans and all our leaders of the country, Lord, of this county, Lord. Be everything they need, Lord, and we ask that all of our people that are here, that all of our citizens that come to share tonight, that, Lord, you would keep them and bless their homes and their assets. We thank you for the opportunity to come together to share, to learn, and to be better. And we ask you, Jesus, if you would please, just allow your Holy Spirit to lead and guide them tonight as they consider to talk and share, to better our county. And bettering our county is going to better our state. Bettering our state is going to better our nation. We thank you so much that you have covered them and hold them and keep them, Lord, as they represent all of our areas and that they will speak boldly and stand strong. And thank you. Thank you for everyone. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be able to call upon your rich and holy name, because without you, Lord, we are nothing. Without love, we are nothing. Thank you. I appreciate everything that you've done. Lord, thank you for this Lincoln County, this Fayetteville, Lord, and we call it favor via. Thank you, because favor ain't fair, it's fabulous. Thank you, Lord. Ask you to bless each one, our lawyers, our Ottomans, Lord, everybody. Lord, be with Brother Newman, Mayor Newman, Lord, as he leads us. And, Lord, be with our police, be with our fire department. Lord, all of us, we all make up this whole county, Lord, and we love you and thank you for this opportunity. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zaylin, and thank you, Desi. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll.
I have 21 commissioners present, three absent, four absent, sorry.
Okay.
Twenty present, yes.
Twenty present, four absent. Okay. All righty. The only announcement that I have at this time, because later in our program, we're going to recognize a commissioner that served this county and his district for a number of years, and he had no finer friend than Steve Graham. Steve, if you would, please stand just a second. I invited Steve to be with us tonight because of Mr. Tommy Stevenson and us recognizing him. But Steve served this county for 44 years, and most of that, he was the chairman of the Budget Committee, and Mr. Tommy and him stood strong representing not only Lincoln County but District One. And Steve, I wanted you to be here tonight when we recognize Mr. Tommy and his family. I appreciate you being here. So y'all, please show recognition for Steve Graham. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our January 17th, 2023 meeting. You should have received that in your information. Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval to have a second. Commissioner Douglas makes a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections on those minutes for that meeting? If not, all in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received 17 monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet and six quarterly committee meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion of acknowledgement of those, please. Commissioner Nix makes that motion for approval to have a second. Commissioner Spray makes that motion. Any questions on any of those? All in favor of acknowledgement of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our county attorney, Mr. Ed Simms, will read a consideration for approval of resolution of respect for the former county commissioner, Joe T. Tommy Stevenson. Mr. Ed?
Whereas on December 23, 2022, the many friends and associates of Joe T. Tommy Stevenson were saddened to learn of his death at age 98. Whereas Joe T. Tommy Stevenson was born on November 3, 1924, the son of the late Coleman and Agnes Stevenson. Whereas Mr. Stevenson was a lifelong farmer in the Coldwater community. Whereas Mr. Stevenson drove a school bus from Lincoln County for 19 years and worked for CFW Construction Co., Inc. and Carter Hills Farm for over 30 years. Whereas Mr. Stevenson served with distinction as a Lincoln County Commissioner for 20 years and served on committees to build the new Lincoln County Hospital and Lincoln County Jail and improve many Lincoln County roads. Whereas Mr. Stevenson was proceeding in death by his wife of many years, Janie Smith Stevenson, and they had three children, Joe Billy Stevenson, Larry Stevenson, and Ann Stevenson Parker, numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, extended family members, and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of Lincoln County Legislative Body do hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Stevenson our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to them as well as his many friends and associates our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Stevenson. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body, and that a copy thereof be forwarded to his children, Larry Stevenson and Ann Stevenson Parker. This is the 21st day of February, 2023.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Walker seconds that. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. We thank you for Mr. Tommy's service and y'all standing back of him all these years. We appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to recognize Kevin Posey. Kevin is our recipient of the 2022 Governor's Volunteer Star Awards for Lincoln County. He has served two terms as president of Lincoln County Livestock Association. He is currently in his second of a four-year term as a Lincoln County School Board member. He also serves on the Tennessee Automatic Merchandisers Association, Southeastern Vending Association, Emerging Leaders Network, Board of the Tennessee Cattlemen's Association. He's a native of Lincoln County, son of Tony and Jan Posey. He's married to Hannah Posey, and they have four wonderful children. I'm speaking from not the family's perspective, but the outside when you see those kids. Jack Arley, Jesse and Oakley, and he's a member of the Fayetteville First Baptist Church, and he will represent Lincoln County and Franklin later this spring as a recipient of our Volunteer of the Year. Kevin, we appreciate you. Thanks for all you do, and congratulations on this award. Amy, if you and Blake will come down to the podium here, please. Don't be bashful. One of the great things we have in Lincoln County is our relationship with our Congress, our senators, and tonight, we have two of those representatives, field representatives. We have Amy Dennis, she's a field representative from Scott Dijarlet, our congressman, and also Blake Neely, he is our field representative from Marsha Blackburn's office. Do y'all want to say anything? You're sure welcome to the podium, and I'll give you more than three minutes if you want it. Good. Well, okay, we appreciate all you do. Our relationship with them is wonderful, and they do a great job in anything we ask them to do. So we appreciate you and thank y'all for all you do and all that the congressman and senator does for us.
Thank you for having us.
Our next item is consideration for approval to reappoint the following to the Health Department Board. Those for reappointment up are Dr. Kyle Spears, Dr. Teresa Morrison, Vicki Gross, who's a family nurse practitioner, myself, William Kidd, DVM veterinarian formerly with Fayetteville Animal Clinic, Dr. Bill Heath, director of our county schools, Jay Colbert, Dennis here in Fayetteville, Becky Glegar, who's a doctor of pharmacy. These terms would expire March 2027. I would entertain a motion for a reappointment of those, please. Commissioner Frazran makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Okay. Commissioner Eldridge makes second. Any questions, comments on those appointments? All in favor of appointing those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. The next will be, we have an introduction by Nancy Harris. Nancy?
Good evening, everybody. So most of you know, we have not filled the planner position here in the county. So we are going to hire Griggs and Maloney. They are a private consulting service. They do planning. I'll let Kevin talk a little bit more about it. But they were in place before planning and zoning the office was opened here in the county. So they're very familiar with what our regulations are. In fact, I think y'all were the ones that introduced the zoning and subdivision regulations to the county. So at this time, I'm going to let Kevin, this is Kevin Chastain, to answer any questions and kind of describe what all he does.
Mayor Commissioners, it's, thank y'all for letting me be here tonight. As Nancy had said, Will Owen in our office, one of our owners, he has been here for maybe upwards of 10 years, assisting prior to Nancy being on staff, helping with establishment of zoning here in the county. I've been with the firm six years, have known Nancy for that six years, and have been able to help her through those years with just some questions she had. So we do have a familiarity with the county, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to partner with you all and be able to step in and serve you all in this role as your planner, I guess, and to be able to review plans for you all until you hire someone full-time for that position. We are based in Murphysboro. We are a civil engineering firm. We provide any civil engineering services necessary. I'm the lone planner, city planner on staff. I used to be in municipal planning, similar to Nancy, prior to coming to here. And we also have about half the company are environmentalists that can do any type of environmental work that might be necessary for you all as well. So again, thank you for the opportunity and to just continue to serve you all as you've allowed us to do in the past. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Chastain? There was a copy of the proposal that's in your packet. Do we need approval on any of that?
I think we should.
Okay. I would entertain a motion that we proceed on, that Griggs and Maloney and that Kevin Chastain be our planner under the, what's in your package, as far as the terms of that. I have a motion to that effect. Okay. Commissioner Rolls makes a motion. Commissioner Coley seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of the proposal, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. I think we're ready for the next one of the proposal.
We had a vacancy on the, well, I'm sorry, I'll take it back. On the border zoning appeals, the state allows us to have either five, seven, or nine members. And quite often with five members, that's what we had before, it's hard to get a quorum. In fact, I remember one time we met out in the hallway and didn't have a quorum, and that was pretty embarrassing. So one of the associate members that we decided to come up with, Paul Braden, he was elected co-chair. And in doing so, that pulled him out of the associate position, and the only way to rectify that was to bump it up to seven, because that made the six. So, long story. We would like to appoint Colin Wakefield, who shows interest in sitting on the board, and that will bring us up to seven members. I don't think he's here.
I would entertain a motion that Colin Wakefield be appointed to the board. Okay. Commissioner Frazran makes the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rose Walter makes second. Any questions? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next item, our county attorney, consideration for approval of a resolution, Lincoln County Legislative Body approving the donation of the county property to the state as it relates to the new bridge to be built at Bearden Mill.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that we prepared, and I believe the Tennessee Department of Transportation wanted a written resolution, so that's why we're bringing it back before you. And I hope you have it before you. Is it in your packet?
Yes.
Okay. It reads like this, "Lincoln County is the owner of the following described real property," and I'm not going to read the legal descriptions.
Please don't.
Okay. This is out on Kidd Road, and there's a north track, which is .2.07 acres, track number one, and there's a south track, track nine, which is .149 acres. Tennessee Department of Transportation is constructing a bridge over the Elk River at Kidd Lane and needs certain lands for access to this bridge, including the real property described above. The bridge will be of great benefit to the citizens of Lincoln County in providing another bridge over the Elk River. Tennessee Code of Antetase, Section 12-9-110, allows counties to convey or transfer real property to other public agencies, so long as the other public agency utilizes the property for a public purpose. And each public agency authorizes such conveyance or transfer and determines that the terms and conditions are appropriate. Lincoln County Financial Management Committee has approved the donation of the above-described real property to the state of Tennessee. Now therefore, be resolved by the Lincoln County Legislative Body that the gift of the above-described real property to the state of Tennessee be approved, and the county mayor and county clerk are authorized on behalf of the county to execute and deliver to the state of Tennessee a proper deed of conveyance of the above-described real property. This is the 21st day of February, 2023.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, 2022 Planning and Zoning Performance Report. Charles Hunter, Planning and Zoning Director.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, evening, Commissioners. Mayor Newman just asked me to somewhat hit the high points of our annual performance report. Permits issued for 2022, we did 329 permits totaling $142,250. That's about 3,500 stops for me, 10 stops per permit. You can see that our permits went up from, over the years, from '21 to '22, we went up about 50 permits, somewhat like that. Our property maintenance and zoning compliance letters, we did 163 zoning compliance letters, that's for addressing. We had 78 property maintenance complaints. 59 letters were sent out. We got 52 that are in compliance of those 78 currently, or at first of the year. Border zoning appeals, we had four special exception meetings, two variance meetings, one appeal meeting, and one special called meeting. Subdivision plat reviews, we had 70 minor plats, two major plats, eight commercial construction reviews, and we had one other, which was a cemetery. And that was down a little bit from '21, very little, but our business license reviews total for the year was 121. For home occupation, we had 21 commercial business. Had several zoning resolution and subdivision amendments to our regulations over the year, throughout the year. As far as training, Mr. Kevin Chastain, he was also, he trained us last year, gave us about a four-hour training, and he's doing it again this year, actually, this Saturday, at the same location. As far as the teamwork, we continue to work with EMA, FEMA, mapping services, TDEC, TDOT, Lincoln County Highway Department, and just to make sure that everything is on the up and up before we try to issue permits and so on. Our goals for 2023, of course, this year, we're losing immediately. Nancy Harris is be, Tuesday, a week from today is her last day. She'll be missed dearly in the office. We had hired her predecessor, John Trusler, and his start date was January the 5th, but he decided this wasn't for him and resigned. In 2022, we also hired Tony Hardeman, an additional building inspector and property maintenance enforcer. He's doing great and working hard to get the remainder of his certifications. Michelle, she works in the office, continuing to do zoning compliance, letters, issuing building permits, reviewing rezoning, business license, and all those several tasks. And of course, me, I've taken the reins as director, started officially January 20th of 2023, mainly just managing the office and so on. And all the planning will still be sent to Griggs and Maloney. And I'll answer any questions to that.
Any questions of Charles?
Have anything for me. Thank y'all.
I would entertain just a motion of acknowledgement that you receive this report, Commissioner Ashley makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Taylor, seconds. Any questions? All in favor of acknowledging of a receipt of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimous. Thank you. Next item, county attorney again, consideration for approval of a resolution, Lincoln County Legislative Body regarding County Powers Relief Act.
Been a lot of reading today. Whereas Lincoln County has experienced and will continue to experience accelerated growth, and whereas the citizens of Lincoln County for far too long have been given the burden of paying for new development by ever-increasing property taxes, and whereas it is the desire of Lincoln County to have this growth pay for the expansion of services said growth necessarily requires. Whereas in 2006, the Tennessee General Assembly enacted the County Powers Relief Act, TCA 67-4-2901, et cetera, which provided the authority for counties to enact inadequate facilities taxes. And whereas the growth in Lincoln County has led to the need for the expansion of county services, including but not limited to new schools, law enforcement, fire service, emergency management services, new roads, et cetera. The adequate facilities tax on development allowed in TCA 67-4-2913 alone has proven to be woefully inadequate in meeting the demands for additional services the county has experienced. And whereas pursuant to TCA 67-4-2913, the County Powers Relief Act specifically forbids a county from enacting an impact fee. However, it excluded municipalities from the prohibition of enacting impact fees. And whereas in the Tennessee Attorney General Opinion Number 07-161, that's December 11 of 2007, the Tennessee Attorney General also opined that the County Powers Relief Act does not prohibit cities from enacting impact fees. Whereas municipalities are specifically granted the authority to enact impact fees pursuant to TCA Section 6-2-201, Part N 15, and TCA 6-33-101, Part N A, to fund the expansion of their services caused by growth. And whereas Lincoln County desires to be given the same opportunity afforded to municipalities in determining how to best fund the expansion of services necessitated by accelerated growth. And whereas the Lincoln County Commission deems it to be in the best interest of Lincoln County and its citizens, to request that the state legislature support an amendment of the County Powers Relief Act to allow counties of the state of Tennessee the same options and granted municipalities when it comes to funding the expansion of services necessitated by accelerated growth. And where it is fundamentally unfair to require the citizens of Lincoln County to continue to fund the expansion of services caused by growth with ever-increasing property taxes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to respectfully request that the Lincoln County Legislative Delegation support any bills presented to amend the County Powers Relief Act to merely allow the counties of Tennessee to be placed on a level playing field with municipalities in our great state, to determine the most conservative way to establish a means for funding the accelerated growth of Lincoln County's experiencing without burdening the current tax base with increased property taxes. Be resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate county officials, to the Lincoln County Legislative Delegation and/or others as deemed proper. This is the 21st day of February, 2023.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas, I'm sorry, I got his eye first, or he got my eye first, makes a second. Any questions or needing any explanation on this? Be glad to help you.
Is there a bill or amendment in the current session?
There is. I don't know where it is, if it's out of committee or where it is, but there's a lot of counties backing this, because some counties have the impact fee. Then after they passed the law, I think in the 2007, that limited counties out of this, we weren't able, we attempted several times to do it, because the law was what it was, we could not pass an impact fee. So hopefully, this will get passed. Fayetteville City could do one under the way the law is now, but outside the corporate limits of Fayetteville, we could not do one. Any other questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, Doug Campbell, our EMA Director, consideration for approval to accept property located at the New Blanche School for the purpose of building a new Blanche fire station.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not all my notes. It'll be short and brief. As you know, the property sold at the old Blanche School, and the school board graciously has given the county an acre and a half of land to build a new fire station there at the New Blanche School. And Kearney County Attorney Simms said that we need a deed, and this is so that we can accept. We've had the property surveyed, and it's ready to be recorded, but we need a deed so the school board can put it into the county's name. And it's my understanding that we just need a motion so that he can proceed with doing the deed. Is that correct, Mr. Sims? Close enough. Any other questions on that, or anything I can maybe answer? Any, any other questions on that, or anything I can maybe answer?
Have a look at what it's going to cost yet?
For the building? We have not, we went to Chatham County and reviewed the stations that the State Fire Marshal is approving up there, and they have given me drawings that they paid architectural fees for, so they've shared those with us for no cost, and we're going to look at them. I'm estimating probably at least two-hundred thousand dollars to get a station out there. So right now, we're looking at four bays, and we'll have a day room and sleeping quarters for anywhere from two to four in that. There is a consideration, I was approached by Huntsville Hospital the other day about adding a ambulance out that way, so they may be wanting to lease one of the bays from us, so that's why we'll go ahead and add the sleeping quarters at this time. The cost of, be determined by this committee if we proceed with leasing them a bay, so they can at least run a day truck for now out of that station.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion for approval of acceptance of that land for EMA. Commissioner Coley makes a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Walker, seconded, any questions, discussions? All in favor of the proposal, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Back in December, the twentieth, in our meeting, December meeting, a motion was tabled that relates to file number twenty-twenty-two R seven, that's the Jack Daniel Brown Foreman property on Wall Bash Road. In that motion, it was said that this would be taken back off the table no later than our February meeting, that's where we are now, so I would entertain a motion if y'all want that taken off the table. Commissioner Cunningham was recognized.
I move that we, this request be removed from the table.
Okay, do I have a second to be? Okay, Commissioner Ewing, seconded, it's non-discussable, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. That motion is now on the floor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Now that the motion has been removed from the table, I move that we refer this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning Commission, a request by this county commission to change the zoning request on this property from an A-one to a C-one, and it was originally, the request sent to us was A-one to I-one.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Hamrick makes a second. Any discussion? Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
According to our existing procedures, and, and this is why we're sending it back to the Planning Commission, according to our existing procedures, when we request any change to a planning and zoning recommendation, we must refer that change back to planning and zoning to reconsider. And the reason that we are making this request tonight is because one of the first things that we had our lawyer research was whether the properties containing warehouses with distilled spirits, whether they should be zoned C-one or I-one. Our attorney researched this matter, and the whole thing boils down to the definition of hazardous material, and our zoning resolution does not define hazardous materials, and states that items not defined should be referred to in the planner's dictionary. Well, the planner's dictionary provided little guidance as far as a definition goes, basically calling hazardous materials explosive material, flammable liquid, or toxic material. So this dictionary did say that we should resort to building and/or fire codes for definition of this, and our building code did not provide help, but it did say that the international building codes correlate with the requirements of the two thousand eighteen International Fire Codes, which the Tennessee, state of Tennessee operates under. This is where we finally found a hazardous material definition. The International Fire Code expressly exempts the storage of distilled spirits and wines in wooden barrels from being regulated as hazardous materials, or as flammable or combustible materials. So because of these explicit exceptions, the storage of distilled spirits in wooden barrels does not fall within the definition of hazardous materials, and therefore, these warehouse properties should be classified as C-one commercial instead of I-one industrial. So that's the reason that we're sending it back to the Planning Commission for them to review that, study that, and then come back if, if they agree with, you know, what our, what our attorney has researched.
Okay, this will be file item twenty-twenty-two R seven, referring that back to planning and zoning. Any questions? All in favor of that proposal, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next one, Ms. Carolyn Denton, our Chamber of Commerce report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here on behalf of the chamber. First, I would like to congratulate Kevin Posey on receiving the, the Governor's Volunteer Star Awards. We're very proud of his accomplishments and all of the community spirit that he has, so thank you, Kevin. The chamber is also happy to be the county coordinator for the program. We appreciate everyone who participated on the night with Local Government Day. We had a great day, and we have some of the class members here tonight, so we're glad that the leadership class is here. Currently, we're working on our community guide with the exchange that will be out in the spring. Our chambers commu, Education Committee hosted mock interviews with Fayetteville High School, and business and industry leaders interviewed seventy-five students. On March the seventh, we'll be having mock interviews at Lincoln County High School for a hundred students, and we hope to go to Riverside in April. Our student advisory board in January, we had a nonprofit panel to speak to the students. This was the, also the kickoff for our penny drive for Junior's House Blue Ribbon Walk, and they have since wrapped that up. And this month, we were to go to Grammar to tour, and that had to be canceled due to school being out, so we hope to reschedule that before the end of the school year. On Thursday, February the twenty-third, we will be having a Breakfast Fuzz event. It's a speed networking event, and Motlow College is hosting that for us. And we'd like to remind everyone that Hamburger Day on the Hill is coming up on March the twenty-ninth. We will be having a charter bus that will transport local residents to and from Nashville, and we hope that all of you will be able to go. We'd love to have a big crowd from Lincoln County. Our Lincoln County burgers will be provided by Kickin' S Ranch this year, and we also want to thank the Lobstuck Association for every year going up and grilling twelve-hundred hamburgers on the streets of Nashville, so we're really looking forward to this thirty-fifth year. Our twelfth annual Don't Be Fooled Seminar for Senior Adult Scan Prevention will be on April the third, from nine until eleven, at the Lincoln County Fairgrounds. This will be a drive-through event, as we did last year, and we ask everyone to enter on Amana Avenue. If any of our seniors have personal documents that they'd like to have shredded, the document destruction truck will be there onsite. We'll have members of the FBLA and the Lincoln County High School Business Management Class to assist with traffic and also getting the documents out of the trunk, so you just have to put them in your trunk, and you don't even have to leave your car. We also have Feed America First, they will be there giving out family food boxes to everyone that comes in. We do ask one box per family, per household, and then on, to announce our music in the park, that will be beginning on May, be the third Thursday, May through August, at Stone Bridge Park, and we'll be announcing our lineup very soon. That's my report.
Any question of Ms. Carolyn? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I think she does deserve a round of applause, somebody started it. Thank you, Carolyn. I believe we're ready for Budget Committee Report. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met February the seventh, twenty-twenty-three, at six o'clock PM at the Lincoln Central Academy Library. All members are present. Chairman Doug Cunningham opened the meeting, item one, county mayor. Fayetteville, Lincoln County Public Library HVAC system. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor to appropriate eight thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents from the ARP funds for this project, motion died for lack of a second. We had another motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed unanimously to approve the amount of eight thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents from fund balance as the county's one-third cost for replacing the library's HVAC system.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Nix makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor, seconds. Any questions on this item? One-third would be paid by the friends of the library, one-third by the city, and if y'all see fit, one-third would be paid by the county, and these funds would be coming from the general. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
I think we've already taken care of item B.
Yes, sir.
Which would be the vacancies.
We have.
I'll move along to item C.
Yes, sir.
Opioid abatement fund disbursement, letter of agreement. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed seven yes, one no, to approve Mayor Newman to sign the letter of, of agreement to accept the one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollar and forty-nine cents for the opioid abatement and remediation activities listed.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Caldwell, seconded that. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
I believe we've handled the next item.
Yes, sir.
Item also, I'll move on to item E, which is Humane Society Update. Mayor Newman updated the committee on the electrical and flooding problems concerning the Humane Society. A recent visit from the Fire Marshal resulted in concerns of electrical issues. Specifications are being addressed by certified electricians, and the city will be bidding out these services, accounting to pay their portion of the total cost once determined. That was the information I spoke.
Yes, sir.
Next item, Director of Schools, Bill Heath, Highland Rim School Project and all that is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed six yes, two no, to recommend approval of postponing the school's request until budget time. And a little latitude here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, you're allowed.
I'm, Chairman, I'm the secretary of that committee, and the two no votes, in my, in my mind, was a misunderstanding. I think some of, some of us heard two different things. What I heard was that we were going to put it off until after this budget cycle, and what was meant was we were going to look at all the county budget and look at the school budget right after that, basically. Is that a fair assessment, Commissioner? So I think that's probably the reason for the two no votes, but irregardless, that'd be my mistake, because I'm the, because I'm the secretary of that committee. But we did have, for the record, six yes, two no, and the motion passed.
Okay, and Commissioner Cunningham, I thought the intent was what Commissioner Bryant said, that we get the budget together, then we'll readdress this during this coming up, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Was that the intent you?
That was. The, the, the school board really wanted kind of a decision now as to whether we were going to appropriate forty, forty-some-odd million dollars for this new project, and, and we just felt like until we see, you know, the sheriff's budget and, and everybody else's budget, we're not going to know exactly how everything's going to fit, so we just wanted to do all that at budget time rather than, you know, trying to do part of it.
That was my understanding, that where, when you're voting tonight, you're not voting for any appropriation on any building, you're voting to, time-wise, put this at the end after we get everything else put together for next year's budget, then we readdress this. Everybody understand if you see fit to move this motion?
During, during this cycle.
During this cycle, and I would entertain a motion to that effect. Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion, do I have a second? Commiss, Commissioner Fresran, did you second it? Any questions? All in favor of this motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Finance Director, A, bid recommendation for up to, up to a five-year contract with E and A Services LLC for dark fiber WAN services to deliver internet to our schools. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and passed unanimously to approve the attached E and A Services LLC for dark fiber WAN services to deliver internet to the schools.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Rose Walter, seconded that. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item B, one-on-one general fund budget amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to approve the attached one-on-one general fund budget amendment.
What's the will of commission on this item?
Please be prepared.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Cunningham, seconds. Any questions on these? All in? This is for the general fund budget, there are a list of those, you should have got it, do you see it? Commissioner Fresran? I can give you, if you want to look at this sheet, I, I can give it to you. You want to look at this, Troy, I'll tear it out. Okay. I'll give you a second to take a look there. Any questions? Any questions on those? Okay. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item C, one-twenty-seven, other general government special revenue budget amendment. That's attached, we had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Caldwell, and passed unanimously to approve the one-twenty-seven, other general governmental, or government special revenue budget amendment.
Okay, any, well, let's get a motion. What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing, seconded those. Any questions on these? No questions, all in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item D, one-forty-one, general purpose school fund budget amendments. They're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to approve the one-forty-one, general purpose school fund budget amendments.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval, do I have a second? Commissioner Rose Walter makes a second. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item E, financials, and they're enclosed. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to acknowledge acceptance of the financial statement.
Would entertain a motion that you received, those?
Go move.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Ewing, seconded. Any questions over the financials? All acknowledged and received of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimous. Commissioner Bryant?
Item four, Chairman Cunningham, Part Eight. Chairman Cunningham informed the committee that a suit has been filed against the county and planning and zoning. Attorney Sean Henry has been hired to represent the county and planning and zoning.
Attorney Sean Henry has been hired to represent the county and planning and zoning. A hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, February the 14th, 2023 in the Chancery Court. And no further business to be presented. A motion by Commissioner Bradford and seconded by Commissioner Ewing and unanimously passed to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready for the notary publics.
I have Holly Bartlett by Commissioner Brown, Phyllis Lynn Carlisle by Commissioner Nix, Angel S. Wilson by Commissioner Taylor, James R. Howison by Commissioner Douglas, Kyle Richardson by Commissioner Sanders, Sandra Metcalf and Rebecca Owen by Commissioner Douglas, Andrea Delap by Commissioner Mitchell, Melissa Stevenson by Commissioner Nix, Deborah K. McKitt and Carrie B. Sullivan by Commissioner Cunningham, Catherine Burke by Commissioner Caldwell, Robin Rosier by Commissioner Walter, Kelly Knotts by Commissioner Douglas.
Anybody y'all thought, Commissioner Mitchell? Gotcha? Okay. Anybody else they thought they had on the list or you need to add to the list? Entertain a motion for approval of that list then. Motion to approve by Commissioner Gunther Berg, seconded by Commissioner Spray. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approving that list, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. We're moving to new business and Commissioner Walker has asked me to be recognized. Okay, any objection to recognizing Gary Byers? Gary, you can come to the podium here and you can have three minutes to address the commission.
Three minutes, well, I might ask some of my commissioners I voted for to ask a little bit longer. It's probably going to take more than three minutes. I will say, I've been in this county for 35 years. First commissioner in the meeting I've been too. And I'm highly disappointed. And let me tell you why. I follow rules and regulations and was told what to do. And I come here to complain about something and found out it's already been approved this week. But let me get started. I bought my farm on Good Hollow Road in 1984, moved here in 1988. Well water. About 89, 90, you know, well started going dry. At that time, couldn't get county water up our road because they said we didn't have enough people. So nine of us went in together and paid for our water. Mr. Joel Hastings let it right away come through his property. I let it right away come through my property to supply nine taps. All right. We all paid for that, paid between $3,000 and $4,000 a piece. Taxpayers didn't pay for it. Water Department didn't pay for it. Now we've got a problem with a out-of-county contractor to build houses that was told that he could not build but four houses. He couldn't build within 100 feet of a six-inch line. It's a quarter of a mile from a six-inch line. And they said, well, you can't build but four houses because it's a four-inch line. Well, guess what? When they hooked it up, it's three-inch line. Now we're experiencing low water pressure. So I go to the water department and felt like I didn't get the detention I deserved. I'm a taxpayer and citizen. I was informed they did a water pressure test. But here's where they did a water pressure test. 200 feet from the four houses. I'm a mile and a half at the end. Ours is a terminal line. It's not a complete line. It does not go nowhere else. I was also informed that it didn't make any difference. 20 pounds of pressure is what the state requires. I asked any of y'all, how many of y'all got 20 pounds of pressure? So I did what they told me to. They blamed it on the planning commission. So I go to the planning commission. I get there, I tell them my problems. I told them what the man told me. He said it's y'all's fault. And they said he lied to you. He could have stopped the project, just like Keith Gill could have stopped the project. Tim Gill could have stopped the project. LPU could have stopped the project. I measured the road in front of these houses. Anywhere from 13 feet wide to 17 feet wide. One car, y'all. There's not enough, barely enough room anywhere on that road for two cars to pass. So I've come here, you know, what's done is done. That's all I got to say. What's done is done. You can't go back and change history. I'm here to stop any more houses being built after he was told he couldn't build anymore because of these regulations. Man, this is weak. I mean, this is really, you know, what I say. I'm sitting here telling y'all, I've got some neighbors, a lot of neighbors couldn't come. I got a neighbor that did his own test, that's highly expert in hydraulics. He's just getting 40 pounds pressure down the line. We got a major problem. What is the impact on these places coming in our communities? Bus, the bus won't go down that road. So the kids got to go up to Red Hill Road, which is top of the hill, dangerous place because they can't get the bus. Why are we approving properties like this to be developed? And I asked him in the planning commission, I said, how many of y'all been out there to even look at it? Only two of them said yes. Two. If you're going to approve a project, go look at what you approved, y'all. I've rented that farm for 20 years. High tensile fence. Y'all know what a high tensile fence is? It's high tensile wire. All they did, cut openings. The wires laying out the road. And let me ask you this. Who's responsible if I get that wire wrapped around my axle for my truck? The driveways to the houses, gravel on top of grass. That ain't what had you build a driveway. You don't put gravel on top of grass. You get down to the bare ground. The minimum of each one of them houses built, the minimum, 45, and that's what they, 45. So we approved the minimum of septic tanks. And I'm highly disappointed now because I come in, I did what I was told to do. Told how to follow rules and regulations. I come here tonight, found out it's already approved for more houses. Ask me questions. Ask me questions. We've got a serious problem in this county that we're not paying attention what we're doing. Raise your hand if any of these places are affecting you. Nobody. So if we're going to have a planning commission that's going to do right and do what you're supposed to do, y'all just go right out there. That's all I ask you to do, right out there and look. And see, I had a couch laying for two weeks out next to the road. Two weeks. We don't have furniture pickup out in the county. We don't have furniture pickup. Two weeks. Think about it. Had to, to Mexico, to Spina, it don't make no difference. I'm not here, it's a double-edged sword. I'm not here to say, I don't want nobody telling me who I can send my land to. Let's get that straight. I'm not telling you. But if we're going to allow houses to be built like that, and I have heard rumors, two houses on one septic tank, I was told. We can't build them unless there's one driveway per house. Well, I can take you right out to Camargo Road when there was some excellent agricultural land. And that's a lie there because there's more than one house to each driveway. So I appreciate your time. If you've got any questions, I'll take them. In the last year?
What was up for you today? You said that something was up for you.
Well, it was what I heard when I get here, they're already doing dirt work.
Nancy, is there?
Are we talking Blair Hollow?
Yes ma'am. You don't have any? The only thing, it's not been approved. Okay. Well, here's what I'm wanting, or here's what I'm asking. You ask for a lot, but you don't get it. I'm asked for no more houses to be built on that property. It was not a good study done. The regulations were not followed. If you've got a regulation of 100 feet within a six-inch water line, let's follow the rules. That's all I ask. I don't care who it is building houses. Let's follow the rules. And I would ask any of y'all tomorrow, drive out there and see what I'm talking about. I appreciate your time.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
You're a commissioner, you can say anything you want to. Why don't you come to the microphone, Commissioner?
I just want to say that I did drive out and look at Blair Hollow. The road is very congested. Those houses are right next to one another, right up on the road. And I do consider it dangerous. I did call and speak to Mr. View and express my concerns about that. It is my understanding that the land will not per. Can anybody comment on planning and zoning when they turn their information in?
Before we give the permit, we have a checklist. And one of the items on that checklist is to get a copy of the actual T-DAT, which is the subject system permit, of the application, the actual permit. So before it goes out, we verify that that house has a approved T-DAT permit to go with that house.
I guess what I'm asking is the surrounding land. And we know, so no permit has been put on that, so we wouldn't know if it per.
That's correct. I don't have anything active other than those four houses.
So if someone is doing work on that property right now, that's in discussion in this meeting, and we might go ahead and request that planning and zoning, and look it up and see if their plan is...
We actually did. It's just pushing earth. We don't do anything on pushing earth. It's not active with developing that property.
There is a sign that is at the end of that road that I saw when I drove to work that indicates that something is going on on that road.
It's a unknown few with the yellow firm. Somebody on that road. It's not a legitimate sign.
While we're discussing, I do have just a few more questions. Because I've been attending the T-DAT planning and zoning, and a lot of people are concerned about this type of development. I have called some surrounding counties and asked if they've experienced anything similar because they have the similar rules in place that we do and they have not experienced developers taking advantage of it. I do consider this to be a loophole. So I guess my next question would be, we have where you can buy land and you can build four homes, correct? Within a year, you don't have to turn it into a major subdivision. Meaning you don't have to adhere to major subdivision rules, correct? And then you can come back the next year and then you can add four more and you can keep doing that over and over again. And you can supersede having to develop that into a major subdivision, correct? I consider that to be a loophole. And I feel like our community is really busy. I'll use a nice word because I'm a teacher, Putin. I think that that also has contributed to some of the issues with Highland Rim and the overgrowth. And we get to get ahead of it. I don't feel like we're getting ahead of it now. And is there anything that we can do to prevent developers from taking advantage of us? Because I do believe that is what is happening. How many people do we have, a normal person, that is doing that sort of building on a minor plaque, which would be four homes? How many developers do we have that are doing that?
I can think of three.
So it's a small number.
But let me back up. You mentioned that you do four and then wait another year and do another four. Three is to that amendment being sanctioned because of the subdivision. Make a new floor, follow and repeat another floor, follow and repeat another floor.
So it made progress that there's still work?
We made a step forward in trying to curb that somewhat. And is it an answer for it? No. But let me also back up because I feel like we need to defend something here. When a minor plaque goes out, and when I say goes out, it goes to all the utility committee members, just FDU, Tim, War, area of fire. Planning commission. I cannot tell with the county party of utilities. I don't think you're right. I don't have the knowledge for war. Just like, I don't have the knowledge to tell Tim. I don't think you're right. Where they tell me, when I get feedback from all these different people that are in those positions, and they say, looks good, problems, whatever it is. If it is a problem, I rest. But if it comes back and it says yes, then it's true. So I want to defend planning and zoning. We're always given the short stick. We are not the ones ahead of order for T-DAT. We get a lot of flack on T-DAT. We don't do good in the term.
Well, I think that planning and zoning, I think y'all do an amazing job.
And I know you did because you come in and you ask questions. But there are many out there that don't. And it's misconception of, they just let everything go.
I had asked at one of the previous meetings, I do feel like developers, we should be more stringent and allow with them. So I had asked, and we took it to the board and didn't get much support on it, on the utilities board. But when a developer wants to build homes like this and we know what's going on, and why are we not, even if it takes a little extra time? We know we need to be looking at this. This person has a track breaker. We do need to see how that's going to impact A, B, C, and D. And I know you didn't get support when you took it. But I just need to say that on the floor so that everyone else knows. A lot of times we don't have discussion until it does take place on the floor. But I think we need to have utilities looking at things like this with a magnifying glass because I think that also could help circumvent it. And I do not think developers should be able to build homes like that. It is costing the taxpayers money. It is costing the school system money, overcrowding. And we have taken small steps and I think we need to take a larger one. Land and homes are very important to people in this community. That's why a lot of people are here on a separate issue because they love their land and want to protect Lincoln County. And it is our job to be creative and think outside of the box and speak up and try and make a difference and speak up for our constituents like Mr. Byers. I think we can do better and I would like to encourage, and I emailed some of you, go to the planning and zoning meetings. They're just as important as budget. You're going to learn so much collectively as an educated commission. We can make a difference and make a better Lincoln County.
Hey Nancy, while you're there, address, because I think Commissioner Rose Walter and I probably wanted the same thing at one time. Address that we requested about the five acre, the Williamson County deal. Address the pros and cons of that because there is a con to increasing the size lots to what Williamson County does, which is five acres.
We looked at that, the rural preservation, presented that to the planning. I guess along the line, whenever we may change, so if we say the minimum track size is five acres or the minimum track size is 10 acres. If you're looking at curving something, sure that works. But that same rule, we shouldn't make it across borders, everybody. That's where the problem is. Because if you have twenty acres and you have three children and you want to build off land, that same rules, when they chew, or you're trying to curb somebody else's common use.
Okay.
That's what I am trying to say.
It's one of those, it's a give and take.
Let me say something. I don't want to get involved in playing. I understand what they're saying about the five acres. But I'm saying what those are saying is, if we're going to allow, do it right. Don't buy with a lady. The man with those things, hundred feet on a six-inch line, why is he a poor man? That's all my argument. I don't think, but, but I understand this about the five acres. It ain't hard to, we all got land and, you know. You understand what I'm trying to say? All I'm saying is without rules and regulations, we need to get together. We need the road commissioners, we need you, Keith Gill, we need everybody to sit down and think about, think about... about, think about thirteen feet, that's how wide the road is from him out. When one of them moved out the other day, they did not help tell them to get the truck and trailer out, they knocked their mailbox off the beach.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we not, as a body, can we not vote to do away with the minor subdivision? We, every developer just has to be a major subdivision and be done with it.
Well, it would start back at planning and zoning, but you can make that recommendation for sure, out of this, to go back to planning and zoning.
Well, I make the motion that this body asks planning and zoning to remove minor subdivision, and a developer has to go by a major subdivision vote.
Okay, I recognize, Nancy, it's a little more complicated than that, but you can do minimum sizes, right?
Okay, so it's kind of like what I was talking about.
Will you come, they're, they're requesting you come to the microphone, Nancy.
Thank you.
And the reason of this is, the people watching online, uh, they don't know what's going on when somebody's off mic. Thank you.
So I'm gonna kind of backtrack just a little bit on what, what I talked about. If you amend something for a particular reason, it's, it's across the board for everybody.
And I understand that, but a, a father breaking off his land to let this child build, and this child build, and that child build, they are building those homes to live in them, they're not developing them to sell them.
How are you going to discriminate between the two?
Well, a developer is a developer, and a child is a child.
You, you can't regulate people on it. You can regulate the rules on the land, but you can't say, Mr. so and so can't do this because what he's done in the past. You can change the rules, but it applies to everyone.
Well, I mean, can we make an amendment that when you add a fifth house, that then you have to bring everything up to where a major... Major subdivision is? 'Cause then you are developing?
Well, it would be. Um, a minor subdivision is less than five, five tracks, so if you have that fifth, it kicks into a major. So we already have that in place.
But how is it being jumped around then? Are we able, we've got this platter land over here, we divided up, and we've got four, and then we're letting them come back and do four more, or I think...
In a year. And again...
Can we remove that? Can we change that?
To what?
Take out the year, you have, no matter how many times you come back.
If you're gonna change it, you, it's, changing the lot size is gonna be your basis of what you're gonna have to do it off of. You're gonna stop developments if you do, uh, unless it's a major subdivision, but you can stop those minor subdivisions just changing the size of the lots that they could be.
I think we need planning and zoning to look, we've got a problem, we know we've got a problem, let's get some people together and figure it out. So, can we all agree that there is an issue?
There is.
And there's a loophole, and it is out of control, I'll support whatever to change this, but it's not going to be Lincoln County.
Okay, we have a motion, but no second. Okay. Okay, restate your motion, Commissioner Colwell.
Um, that, my motion would be that we send...
A request.
A request to zoning and planning to relook, to look at the rules and regulations for minor subdivisions.
Okay, and...
And follow it up with amendments. Amendments to change the wording, to...
Okay, and I've got a second. Commissioner Tack, a second second. Okay, before, for discussion, the best thing this commission can do is attend those meetings.
Yes.
You know, because without your input, you know, it's, they don't have that input there, and if it's gonna get done, uh, this commission needs to express an opinion, uh, there. And look at the rules, because, uh, it's not real simple on a lot of the things that we may want, but there is a way of getting it done, it's just realize what you do for one, you're doing for another, and it's, there'll be, people complain about whatever, whatever you change the rules to.
And, and you can submit it in writing, to your recommendations.
I recognize Commissioner Bryant.
First Chairman, we, I think we're on some pretty dangerous ground here, um, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to change things that we may not completely understand all, all of, but I will say that, you know, uh, and Ms. Nancy's leaving us, and, you know, when we first started planning and zoning, I was probably the, 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 it wasn't probably, I was a, I was dead set against most of it. And I'll say that they have done a great job, and she does, does a great job, and I really, really wish she would stay, and I know she can't, but, um...
Could.
She could, but she's not going to, and I don't blame her, I bet. But, uh, they've made great strides, but now, what, what was just said, I mean, I, I own some property out, out, out on, uh, in the Flint Valley area, and I saw fit to give my daughter and my son-in-law an acre of, of ground on that property. And, and what brought all this four rule, I remember what brought it up. It was, it was a farmer that was giving, I think, some of his people some, some, uh, property, and that's what, what brought this up. So there's gonna always be, and I'll use myself for an example, uh, across from my house, uh, you know, uh, the land next to me, uh, my brother owned it, and he wanted to sell it, and I bought it, and that's fine. Land across from me, a developer bought it, directly across from me, and I thought it brought way too much money, and, you know, I could have probably bought it, but I would have, I could have farmed that land, or had it farmed for a hundred years, and not made what it brought. And there's now subdivision over there, and, uh, and in my case, they, they did a pretty good job. But, you know, we, it doesn't matter what rule you make, in my opinion, there's always gonna be a way to circumvent that rule. It doesn't matter if it's five houses, or five acres, or ten acres, or whatever it is, there's gonna always be people who will circumvent, or try to circumvent, that rule. So I think we're on some super dangerous ground here, trying to make any kind of rulings directly from this commission floor, uh, without, uh, tons and tons of study, and I'm talking about a year's worth of study before we do it. And I would move this motion to be tabled indefinitely.
I don't, I don't think indefinitely, if, Robert rules of order, if you don't bring it up in the next meeting, it dies anyway, so...
Well, that's what I mean.
Unless it's specified, but, uh, we, we can't do it indefinitely.
Well, I just, I simply move we table this motion.
Okay, do I have a second that it be tabled?
I'll second that.
Okay? All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Okay, let me have hands of those voting no, please. Okay. What, it's not gonna pass, I can tell you that, 'cause, so...
There's less yes votes, two are the yes, so I can get those.
Keep them up, so she can get the name, but the motion to table is going to fail, so the motion, which was properly seconded, still on the floor. Any discussion, Commissioner Cunningham?
We, uh, we desperately need housing, and, and like Mr. Byers, remember, we need to do it right, I think we've got some rules, that we follow the rules that we've got, and get somebody to inspect those things. It's kind of like, you know, Ricky said, there's always a way that you can play with it and, and, you know, get around, but we desperately need housing, and, uh, you know, I guess it depends, do we want to grow the county, or, I mean, we can put rules in where it makes it very, very difficult for anybody to build a house, that's what we want. See what we go through this, but every two years, we gotta, gotta go back and discuss this whole thing, but...
I'm not...
And I realize we've got a lot of...
Yeah, I'm not against, but I just want it done like Mr. Byers said, I just want it done right, and air bound, fair playing field.
Okay.
One developer has to make, to do a major...
Commissioner Douglas had his hand up next.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of years ago, we had a work session with the planning and zoning specialists, and that was one most enlightening Saturday mornings that we've spent as county commissioners. We have so many new commissioners that are being pulled from one side or the other, or whatever, that might not understand the full order of things. I would hope that maybe we might need to try to set a work session up with either the same guy, or somebody new, on planning and zoning, so that we can all have good, solid ground to stand on and make, make good decisions on.
Uh, Commissioner Eldridge was next.
I was just gonna say, I'm on the planning commission recently, remember, and I, I agree with what Mr. Byers is saying, I think you're in a position, I agree with what you're saying. I, I, I don't know if you're willing to withdraw your motion, I think we can work on that, I think we see the urgency of that, and we can work on it in, in that planning and zoning committee, and bring back your, your recommendations. My only thing is, I'm a little bit hesitant for this body to be dictated without going to that commission, so, um, I don't know if you're willing to withdraw your motion, but I would, I would take responsibility to try to make sure that we get, get looking at that on the planning.
I think that's what your motion is, is it more than to look at it?
To look at it and say that.
This poll has been kicked around, and nothing has changed, nothing's improved, these houses are continuing to go up, again, we've got a school system here, my kids go to Southland, and that has been impacted, I guess. And we are getting growth, a ton coming from the other side, and I would like to try and regulate that, and not have a continuance of these houses that don't have proper roads, or it's congested and maybe dangerous. And I think we need to continue with this motion and vote to actually do something. We're not saying that we want to be the ones that make what the rules are, we're saying there's a problem, it's been kicked down the road, we do have growth, the houses that are going up are not what we want, so what are we gonna do about it? Are we gonna continue to kick it down the road, or are we going to ask that it be looked at, a resolution and suggestions be brought?
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
What, what is our motion again?
Our motion is to, uh, suggestion to the planning and zoning for them to look at the situation they're describing, that the problem with minor subdivisions.
And just report back to us, or whatever?
Change it from the first one.
Pardon?
Let's change it from the first one, that's not what you said first.
What did I say the first time?
She said first.
Yeah, then I had to go back and reword it.
Okay. Is that...
You're basically asking to do what he just said.
Your motion is for first back plan.
That's, that's right, and, and as especially relates to minor subdivisions. I don't think we have a problem with major subdivisions, it's minor subdivisions, and lot size, and numbers, and that type of thing, uh, so, okay. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? An aye vote is just a suggestion, referring this back to planning and zoning. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approve. Any other new business?
Can I, can I suggest something? Uh, for Commissioner Douglas about the, the suggesting special training, we have the perfect person right here. He does...
We got the perfect person, but we don't have enough time tonight.
Kevin, Kevin is extremely experienced, um, he does our required four hours of training for BZ, Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, and has done it for three years, yeah, in a row now. Um, I mean, I could, I could tell you all about this guy, what he's got, his credentials, so, he's a perfect person.
Has he, has he done y'all's training this year?
He's doing it this Saturday.
Do you want to address the commission, Kevin, at this time on this issue?
I'm not sure what to say, but, uh...
It's...
Obviously, y'all giving me some work to do.
The meeting this, this Saturday, I, I cannot invite y'all there, because it's, it was based on count, we had to, we had to do everything ahead of time, we paid for everything ahead of time, it's, um, uh, they feed them breakfast and lunch, so it's, it's a little too late to get anybody else in there, I'm sorry. But we can next year, or they can next year.
Obviously, I don't know the specific situation, I can get up to speed on the specific situation, and, and I have read through some of the zoning regulations here just in, in the past few years, with Nancy asking questions and preparing for training, so, um, obviously, minor subdivisions, subdivision in general, something that every community deals with, whether it be a county or municipality. Um, I would start by saying, you're not alone, everybody, uh, deals with this, speaking to you, Commissioner, you're exactly right, uh, you can always change something, and somebody's always gonna look at how they can come around that, uh, so, and you can make something too restrictive, uh, and you can make something too general, so it is always trying to find that somewhere in the middle. Uh, obviously, again, I don't know specifics of this situation, but obviously, it's something I'll begin working on, looking through, uh, what your current regulations are, but also too, we'll begin looking at other counts, surrounding counties, and how they handle minor subdivision plats as well, and not just, not just adjacent to you all as well, and we can look at anywhere in, in the state of Tennessee, to see how other people address this, and, and it may, it may be a lot size thing, it may be, uh, the number of lots, it may be the frequency that they're permitted to, you, right now, you currently have it one per year, maybe it's one every two years, maybe it's just one only for that particular tract of land to start with, and these are all options we can look at, and see how that may work out, and, and obviously, we can provide several proposals, it doesn't have to just be only one, one proposal, we can bring forward several to the planning commission for them to study, and then ultimately bring forward to you all. Uh, so again, I don't know, I can't say anything specifically, but, uh, you're not alone, this happens in a lot of other communities, and, and currently going on, and we can definitely help with every bit of this, so, I appreciate the work right away, and we'll get, we'll get right on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
In the meantime, what am I supposed to do about my water pressure? See, that's, that's what we missed in the whole thing here. We missed the whole thing. You approved it, and it wasn't not followed by rules, so tell me what we gonna do about my water pressure?
I, Gary, I don't know, but I, I would touch base with an attorney. I mean, I'm...
Okay, timeout, it's gonna cost me money after something that I paid for out of my pocket, nine of us paid for it out of our pocket, it's gonna cost us our money. I'll ask...
I mean, I, I don't know an answer other than that.
One thing, don't build no more houses there. You, you saying our problems, if it's not followed by rules and regulations, let's not build no more houses, we'll be satisfied.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Guntenberg, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. We're adjourned.